Okay, all right, all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the highest court with liberty and justice for all. A small change to the agenda today and that would be moving other business up to follow Mark Wishkamp's presentation this morning. With that said, I would ask to approve the agenda without a single change, please.
Make the motion to approve the changed agenda.
All second. I have a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I can ask for approval of the minutes dated October 12th, 2022.
Move that through.
Second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I can ask for consideration of approval of the claims for payment dated October 19th, 2022.
With the motion to approve.
All second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Mark, floor is yours.
Wonderful.
No, I said, the, the hour will pick you up.
Okay, great.
Thanks for coming down.
Well, thank you. I'm gonna start you. How long's mine going?
About an hour and a half.
Okay. Kill that. So I'm gonna start with the annual report, I'm just gonna go over it just real quickly and then you can take a look at it, but as you opened it up, you can see some of the highlights on the left side and some information about all the leadership study being conducted on the right side, but then when you go ahead and open it up all the way, and I'm just gonna start at the left one from the cross. You can see the, uh, CMAG, which is the company that sold our spec building too. They're still in the process of building that building out. They've, uh, poured the concrete to containment areas, putting bulk storage inside. They continue to work that out with currently hiring. I guess we'll drop down to the bottom of that one, of course, challenges, obviously, the last year has been a nightmare for our companies to find and keep employees. So we've done a number of things, we then held a career fair. We've done roundtables with businesses, we conducted our leadership study, which was just released at the beginning of this year. We hosted a luncheon with Iowa State University to examine the workforce situation. We worked with Mid-Iowa Road on a talent attraction campaign. We've been working with Iowa Falls Alton High School to establish pre-apprenticeship programs, apprenticeship programs. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, then we also updated our housing study. And second pain there at the top, we're, we're a fund view, we worked with Allmets Club and Region Six to secure them a grant for the sign renovation, unfortunately, they did not get any bids on the project. And so we're working with the federal government on that to be able to extend the deadline when the project needs to be completed, otherwise there is, we don't know how that's gonna go, it's out of our hands. I talked with Danny Durham, she said it's not in our program and we can't make that call, so. We pulled up the pipeline and we vote somebody's solution to get the extension.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, like when you put that out for bids, how far does that go out?
Uh, it was probably out with, and because it's a federal money, it's run through the architect, the architect sends that out. So I don't have, I don't know that exactly, but I know that all the local companies had it. But of course, with that was the federal strings that a local company has to comply with. It was short on time, the deadline was coming up and just a lot of companies just said it's not worth it anyway. So, uh, top of that third page, we see the new vet clinic, we, I worked with Iowa State University over a year ago and we worked through, they were interested in opening up a research clinic, a teaching clinic in Iowa Falls. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, but it did P P just, uh, local vet here, Dr. Hill. And so she's a lot the old former Midwest Animal Healthville, is renovating it and hopes to open up yet by new year. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, daycare, obviously daycare is always a concern, so employees can get to work, go to work, not have to worry what's gonna happen with the children, so we assisted legal's and legal's daycare and worked with Region Six to secure them a grant, so we can hire more, uh, employees and some equipment to expand. And then in that last page, you see a little part there, River Valley Pipe House, a company we worked with for about a year before we finally got them settled. They moved into the former Booken Bible building, uh, in River Falls and our, our introduction, I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then, well, that's it for them. For the annual report, it's short. So let me just run through some of the projects that we've been working on recently. Project Harris, which is a program, we give everything to them because they really mean anything, we can't expose anything about the, the business while we're working with them. So, uh, give everything a project. So Project Harris was actually in Iowa Falls, two Thursdays ago. And they were there with their CEO, their CFO, their chief engineer and the business Y'all, the specialist, and we spent a day with them, showing them around and touring the site, interestingly, they're sort of by site. We've got some significant hurdles, so it's not like this is, we're on the home stretch by by any stretch of imagination, but we are continuing to work with them to see how this will go. Hudson Manufacturing, while the bodies would be noted, they closed, I just gave them a meeting with them and their employees. I've been working the last week to pull together companies throughout the county and looking for people and hitting their ads together so that we could present those to the employees that they know, the jobs that are available. And that's what we presented them today, we're most developed, we're staring at you. Provided, make sure on the client or unemployment, that this would be things like that, so. Uh, we wanna create a soft branding for them and obviously we wanna keep those people in heart and head. And by the local employee, because honestly, we have a lot of employers who are looking for employees. About two months ago, I received a lead through a direct contact in business that were looking for 20,000 square foot manufacturing space. We didn't have that in Iowa Falls, so we did show them a building here in El Dora and we're currently, they're interested, we're currently working through a lease agreement to see if we can make that happen, so. And I have another company that's interested in manufacturing space that we're working towards a date in early November to show them another way of here. So keep your fingers crossed and hopefully you can pique their interest. Uh, we're also going to do another mini manufacturing day, this is where we work with Iowa Falls Alton High School and local manufacturers to get students out into manufacturing space where they can see what that career is like and hopefully pique their interest and say, hey, I love that, that's the place I wanna work. So many kids, uh, when you graduate now, what do you do, where would you go, you think they have to leave uh, Harton County to go somewhere else and find a job, there are so many career opportunities here, so. That's gonna be on the 27th, like, month of the year. And we're actually, this year, uh, we moved it around, in the past, we've gone to plastic recycling, carbon, but this year, we're actually going to move it all. More than already, and I don't see resources, so. So again, trying to create a pipeline of talent for businesses and give students an opportunity. We've also been working with the, uh, the high school to establish apprenticeships, pre-apprenticeship programs to give students the opportunity to kind of check out their career before they graduate, so that they can see, hey, that's something I think I really want to do. Um, and they can actually get their foot in the door with the business. So for example, we've got apprenticeship programs, we've got SAW scheme, and we'll have one, we've got some pre-apprenticeship programs going on. So that students, again, are able to, to get a chance to see what it's like. Uh, it's really cool what Iowa Falls Alton High School's been doing with this, they moved that home, it also instituted, was called the Iowa Job Jobs for Area Graduates Program, it's called IJ. So they've actually hired a coordinator who works with students who have barriers that probably aren't going for a four-year education or even a two-year education. So they work to keep them in school and get businesses to come in and talk to the class about what jobs are like in their business, have an opportunity for students to go out and look at some of those jobs. And so it just creates, and it helps, the coordinator also works with students on some of their soft skills. You know, how do you fill out an application, they do mock interviews, uh, you know, so they really work on training those kids off so that they're prepared after listening to go out and apply for jobs with recruiters. So it's, it's a really neat program, excited about that. They've also instituted the Juachin Program, which is gonna be down in the Ashland Bowl, which, again, we bring business people outside the community, from the community. And they talk to kids, it's a curriculum, they talk to kids about work sites and, and, and those types of things, so. Really, it gets exposed to very, really well.
It's not only in Iowa Falls?
It is right now, yeah. It is a program in the high school, in big high schools, they sign a form, they've gotta commit to it, they've got to hire your coordinator and maybe there's, it's a need program.
How would they, what's the process to go to schools, to other schools to get that?
Um, well, I could probably, they, they could, they, they go to, they can contact Iowa Jobs for area graduates, uh, and for a short project. And they're looking for the opportunity to partner with other high schools. Uh, they wanna open up, I think, like they said, 50, 50 new programs throughout the state this year. So they're, they're looking for opportunities. Um, so August and early September, I spent a considerable amount of time working with the city of Iowa Falls on a project to build new spec homes. And so we worked with the, with the home builder, we worked with contractors, we got all the bids in. And by the time we got done, the price of the homes were, well, they were three hundred thousand. And we just said, for lots that we have available, we just said, that's price movement is too high for those lots, and we put a push pause and we're continuing to work through to see if we can find a way to bring down the price of those homes and make them walk over. Uh, countywide strategic planning process and Chan has been here to talk to you about it, I've given you some more information. Hope to see you at the event, uh, it's gonna be November 8th, 9th and 10th, right here, and so uh, so we're looking forward to that and, and looking forward to countywide strategic planning process that hopefully will give us a vision of what Harden County, what we want Harden County to be like in 10 years and a plan to move there. So that's really what it's about. I already talked a bit about Allmets Club and uh, we've also begun a talent attraction campaign, and I have some things up here on, on the monitors that you can take a look at, so it's a project that we initiated along with Mid-Iowa Road. And we've been able to kind of tag off some of their marketing and we created some more, so we've got a program that we call the Middle of the All, so it really refers to how how we're really in the middle of, uh, number five, with the special in the Pauls and areas with, you know, waste the city, Sierra Falls, Waterloo, Marchantown, Haynes, Fort Dodge. Uh, we really can be anywhere, we can see a lot of different things within our drive of this kind of. So, so this is on our website, landing page that we have. Talks about finding yourself and this, and so we're also targeting ads, so we're sending out ads on Facebook and Google Ads. So if you're flipping through your Facebook and all of a sudden one of these ads comes up, that's my fault. But anyway, that's, that's the purpose of it, so. Uh, you know, you're, you're in the middle of the things that most matter, which is a solid paycheck, steady job, respected company, modern small-time living, you can get with your life. And so we've targeted basically at about 50 mile radius around Iowa Falls, targeted different communities where we're sending these ads out to, so we can really chill that, and target those ads to specific areas. Uh, you can see this particular one, we're looking at labelers, so looking at those people who would be probably factory workers and the production rooms, okay, next slide. So yeah, there is, the target's interest of shipwork, warehouse, agriculture, trucks, so we manage with all the vehicles manufacturing. Next slide. And we also then mostly target technicians, that's two ways we can target different interests. So this is, again, basically the same messaging, a little bit different ads. And again, we're targeting that same geo-best area, next slide. And this would be people looking at apprenticeships or computer engineering, mechanical engineering, logistics, metal, shipwork, software systems, so. Next slide. And again, so this stat, stats as of October 11th, these are about a week old, we started the project middle of September, so about a month worth of this, it takes time to build. But we had 538 link clicks, we reached out to over 19,000 people. Uh, reached back, 40,000 impressions, the news was out there, it was seen 40,000 times. And we had 600 engagements where people actually clicked on it, liked it, shared it. And then we had 285 visitors to our, our, our website on the landing page, 330 engagements, they, they uh, looked around 449 times, about 1.7 million actions per user. So that's, that's it, so that's what we're working on, trying to promote our areas, a place to come and work and a great place to host. Um, also working on a couple of other different marketing ideas, obviously, heading to holiday season, but working on a, uh, a shop vocal video and promotion that will again encourage people within a 35 mile radius to shop vocal. So, um, and, uh, let's see. Oh, I did wanna talk about River Valley Pipe, which was one of the things mentioned here, just to mention that of how one project can affect more than Iowa Falls, so, uh, they are, they hired a second ship already, uh, they tell me that everything is sold in the next year. So you see flatbeds of lime green agricultural drainage tile, that's coming from Iowa Falls River Valley. But, uh, they're already looking at the possibility of putting in a second line of production next year, trying to lead demand. And out of their nine employees, four of them are now the plant manager is from Holden. The production supervisor moved here in Illinois, bought a house, you know. So, uh, trying to use their major issue right now, so things are going well, I mean, one business can reach out to have any kind of, you know. That's all I got.
That's all.
What's the housing inventory like right now?
It's, uh, slim to none, it's, it's, it's slim to none, I think it's eased a little bit uh, just because of, you know, interest rates have gone up, right? So there's, there's people that are pausing, uh, by conversations with realtors, they're seeing less of first time home buyers coming up with these payments, they're seeing more of that, uh, let's call it in middle to senior people who are upgrading and moving to a different house, so. It's changed a little bit, but it has slowed some now. I expect, I expect it to, with, obviously, you know, home mortgage rates pushing 7% right now, it's, it's gonna slow.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Yes, I'm very impressed, and sounds secure, because, yeah. Appreciate that.
All right, then we move to other business, Attorney Meyer.
Thank you for letting me speak at the top of your agenda. Um, just wanted to give you an opioid settlement update. I hadn't planned on saying anything, but I just got an email this morning, so I thought I'll share it with you and the public and, and hear where we're at on that too. A little bit of background to bring everybody to speed again. We go into class action against Johnson Johnson and other pharmaceutical companies that were stopping and pushing opioids. And, and so a settlement was reached about a year ago, to, you know, to find licensed things and getting final approvals and all that. And now we're ready to make distribution, and the email that I received today indicated that they both initiated a distribution payment, so I assume that means it's pending a chat. I mean, why they didn't say it that way, I don't know, but that's what I take it to mean, and it says the amount will be $12,000, $15, 40%. That our first installment, our total expected amount over the next 10 plus years would be over $300,000, but this was the first installment. I was curious about that amount because I noticed in September, we had received a figure of $12,627, but back in July, we received a uh, figure of $12,011, so. Uh, I am gonna check with the Attorney General's office to find out what is going on, why the numbers have changed and why do they settle on this particular amount for this distribution. Our next distribution should be larger, so we can then, you know, schedule, predictable schedule for the next 10 plus years, but um, it would be nice to know how, quite is known as a contingency, but I wanted to give you this set update on this, and so when that might happen, then you'll have a part of it, because it's only extended in certain ways.
And those are annual, annual payments, are they?
These will be annual, right.
All right. Attorney, uh, other business, uh, just wanted to make sure that Assessor Mesh wanted us to let everybody know that the assessor's office will be closed October 26th and 27th. Other than that, early voting started this morning in person at the courthouse.
Correct.
And hours for that will be the normal courthouse hours, there'll be one Saturday of
The Saturday, the fifth, um, since it opens, we're tired of getting there, open from 9 until 5.
Okay, so nine to five on November 5th will be the Saturday early voting. And they just need to bring their, uh, an ID and either have their driver's license number and, or their voter ID.
Right.
Like, okay.
Yeah, they have actually ballots, they're nailed out here.
Today.
Yeah. So yeah, if, if you requested an absentee ballot and that fails to arrive in the next uh, probably in three days, please let the Augers Office know and they will do their due diligence in making sure that your absentee ballot is sent to you. All right, Taylor, anything? All right. Michael, Lance, Renee, all right. Other than that, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and go to the next item, some recommendation to the DNR on the animal feeding operation construction permit for Mallard Bay, section 16, Buckeye Township.
Make the motion to acknowledge and recommendation to the DNR, an annual feeding operation construction permit, Mallard Bay, section 16, Buckeye Township.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next I have is consideration of the recommendation to the DNR on the operation construction permit, Harden Buckeyes 25 site, section 25, Buckeye Township.
Make a motion to acknowledge the recommendation to the DNR on the animal feeding operation, construction permit application for the Harden Buckeye 25 site, section 25 of Buckeye Township.
All second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Here, oh, Jessica, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me? Good morning. Um, so you already went through the first one, but I was gonna recommend that you approve it anyways, so that's good.
And I got your email and stuff as well, so, all right. Anything on, uh, the Buckeye, Harden Buckeye 25 site?
Um, no, I was just going to reiterate what kind of we said during the public hearing last week, which is that they Summit was able to purchase the property to the east of the site. Um, and so they are now taking points for that for item number one. And so now they are not taking any points for item seven or item 15, which, um, item seven is the twice the required distance to the private well and item 15 is planting trees, so they still have a score of 450 points for Buckeye 25, which is actually still under construction.
All right, thank you, Jessica, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion, Lance, Renee? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item we have is consideration to approve the stipulation of the bargaining unit for reconsideration. Courtney, I invited Courtney in this morning, he had contacted me about, uh, the reconsideration of the union or the sheriff deputy, and so that had, uh, ceased to exist, uh, two years about, about two years, right? Uh, so, uh, I thought since Courtney had asked, uh, to restate this, give deputies, um, a chance to explain their request before we take in their requested in consideration. Courtney, floor is yours.
Good morning, thanks, thanks for your time. Uh, according to the law, I'm here to represent the county's, we're doing accountable. That's the problem also, here to know since the Bible laws changed, we need representation. So at that time, we had, well, we will support the county supervisors and share the table of some of the negotiations on that half. So if this motion is passed, that would allow us deputies, I'll forget the litigation table, express our protest and concerns and also computer counties, the rest of this concern, and when this is done, we're able to get benefit, not only these deputies, the county in the whole will help with, uh, employee retention and that brings a little bit of points, which, that's why I asked that, consider this motion.
At this point, I'm gonna wait, Lance, Renee, if you have questions or comments or discussion, um, during the discussion period that the motion's made, so.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the stipulation of bargaining unit for reconsideration.
All second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, discussion, Lance?
Do you have anything?
Uh, the only thing I would ask, and I had talked to Courtney about, was, um, I appreciate the foresight. I do think this is looking out for the best interest of the people of Harden County. Uh, I can't guarantee that the three of us are gonna be here in five, 10, 15, 20 years. You can't guarantee you aren't, but you're, you're, I think the intention is to put public safety, uh, in as a, as a priority here in Harden County. And I talked to a lot of law enforcement entities across the state, and recruitment retention is a tough thing. And right now, I think we've got one in the academy and then we'll be a full staff. Uh, and compared to some of like-sized counties across the state, they can't say the same right now. And so I, I, again, I would like Harden County to be a destination for the highest of quality of law enforcement. And so, uh, I can definitely get behind this and give a good paid effort because I know that the deputies will give a good paid effort going forward as well. With that being said, anything else, Courtney? Oh, all right. With that being said, we'll call Jolene.
Please.
Hi.
Renee, hi.
I, motion carries, thank you, thank you. Next item we have is consideration to approve this year, 2022 cost allocation plan.
I'll second.
Then I have a motion and a second, the discussion.
Just to kind of explain it, um, like they explained in their letter, it's this is more or less reimbursement for indirect costs that the county incurs for our local justice office. Um, and what we should get reimbursed this year is $21,857.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I have is consideration to approve the 2022 county league commissioner's annual report. And Taylor, I know you can see over at the hall.
Yep, he's at a class today, so he's gonna be here, but yeah.
Yep, he's at a class today, so he's going to be here. But yeah. Anything I sat down and thought about? No, he's saying they're going well. Like he actually marked it out that he thought things were going better. So I'm happy. I drive around and I see, I see progress.
I agree. And we have very aware constituents. And they'll let you know when something's not going well. And I've heard more good things over the last two years than I have bad. And it seems like if I do see something, I don't have to say something. It's already been noted and within you know, sometimes days, if not a few weeks is remedied. And so I think that our crews, whether they're part of the cleanup efforts, are making note when they're out on their routes. Hey, we have a snow trap issue. We have a noxious weed issue. So I think things are being recognized before they become an issue as well, or as big issues.
We have, I think it was, it was four or five public complaints about the property. So you know, like there's other people paying attention to those. It's good.
Okay, with that being said, I can ask for consideration of approving the league commissioner's report.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item I have is a change of status in the sheriff's office. This is a discharge of Brooke theme effective October twelfth, twenty twenty-two. They were permanent part-time correctional officer at a rate of twenty thirty-five an hour.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is the change of status in the secondary rodents department for Cole Birchmire, the truck driver. The change status is effective fourteenth of October. You're being paid a rate of twenty-three thirty-four an hour.
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Well, we took a roundabout way to the end of today's meetings. So with that being said, I can ask for adjournment and recess.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, I've motioned a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, or adjourn. Thank you.